Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to a special meeting of the Greenwich Board of Selectmen. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a special meeting for the specific purpose of, under old business, to consider a request for municipal improvement made by the Board of Education on a six-two vote to consider and refer Scheme B as adopted to the Greenwich Planning and Zoning Commission. This is a public meeting. It is not a public hearing, and the purpose today is to hear from the architects in the Board as to why they're requesting this particular plan to move forward. I know Ms. O'Neil, is she here? We'd asked her to open the -- she's coming. There's copies of the agenda which enumerate the order of business today. We do have a couple of items in addition to this that relate to appointments and nominations, as well as an executive session related to pending claims and litigation. Perhaps while we're waiting for Ms. O'Neil, since you have been the chief architects of the various planning proposals, perhaps we begin with your presentation, and then Ms. O'Neil, here she is. Barbara, we were just in the process of introducing you for the per-
Did you say nice things about me?
Yes. We actually put you down as tardy for your first meeting ever. I was just saying, the purpose of the meeting is to consider the latest request for municipal improvement made by the Board of Education on a six-two vote for Site B as defined on the A2 survey as the general location for a new school building from the Lebanon School and at the Options Considered section, page 38 of the original document, page 43 of the amended document of the ed specs originally adopted on January 8, 2015, to reflect Site B as the preferred site location. So essentially, if you would just perhaps go through as to how, you know, your Board met, they looked at things, you're recommending this one, and then we'll have the architects present.
Well, as you know, this has been a long process. We started out with a committee that looked at A, which is now, I guess, D, and decided that that wasn't the best site for a variety of reasons, and one of the most strong ones was that the community did not want the children moved. So then we looked at Site B, at being open and accessible, and then through a community forum, there was concern about using the open space for a school. And so rather quickly, Scheme or Site C came up as a proposal, and then that wasn't acceptable to the Selectmen. So then, again, fairly quickly, we went back to D, which was the old A. The one good thing is we all agree that it is, it'll be a new school, not a renovated school, and so we're back to D. And so what we did then the other night was to change the ed specs from C, which were turned down, and voted in favor of using Site B as the site for the new building. So that was the adaptation of the ed specs, so that they now read that the Board has voted in favor of using Site B for the new Lebanon School.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Mr. Chalsoffie and Mr. Tribe, if you would, please.
I just wanted to say something about diagrams for a second. There's a whole process to go through, which you call the municipal improvement process. There's the whole design process to go through, questions of where handicap spaces are and the size of everything and turning radiuses, and whether roads or driveways are one-way or two-way, the specific absolute size of the building, whether it's setback further from a particular street. Those are all kinds of adjustments that can be made. This is a diagrammatic plan to show the general location. And I've shown this drawing many times. This is with north up. This is the footprint of the existing school, and the constraints we face are mostly shown here because the long building sits on the top of a ridge, in fact, higher than the neighboring houses on this side and dramatically higher than the ravine which separates you from 95. So that's the kind of landscape we're in, and in that, we looked as exactly as Barbara O'Neil explained, we looked at really seriously at three different schemes. We first, actually four, we first looked at renovating the existing school, then we looked at two new sites, and then finally at the recommendation, I think of this, your group, we looked seriously at building a new school on the existing site. We're looking at this in two ways. One is what we would call a rendered site plan with a building plan imposed on it right here. This one happens to show the footprint of the existing building right on it, and then we've drawn a diagram of that same thing, just to show you how it would work. This is what we had up on the screen at our last meeting on Tuesday, but it was virtually invisible. This shows us that the library stays where it is on William Street. There's been questions about what we showed here, which was taking 14 spaces of parking from here and putting it over there. That was on the assumption that these were 48 spaces reserved for the library, and these 14 spaces plus 71 become the parking for the school. My understanding is that's probably all right with the library as long as there's a way to ensure these belong to the library. We then showed a green space in here, which now people are calling the Village Green, which is about six tenths of an acre, and adjacent to it, but at a slightly higher elevation and with a fence, would be the small children's playground. We've also shown to the south of the building, a playing field, and the playing field is big enough for a softball field, but it can obviously be used for running back and forth if you're in an elementary school. What came up in all these discussions was, well, what about other fields that you could put on the site? So we had first shown parking, which was really right in there, and we showed restoring woodland right back here, but at the request of various people who spoke, we also showed the outline of what could be a potential field. And the question I asked was, well, who is the field for? And they said it would be for games like lacrosse, or soccer, or even football, for kids from first grade through eighth grade. And we looked at the national standards of that and put in a field that would be kind of a one-through-eighth-grade playing field for games, field games. That would actually fit here if you chose to put it. That wasn't in the budget. It was assumed that things like that would be a recreation department issue, not a school issue, but that's just kind of hearsay. I don't have a specific answer on that.
I think that's an important point, in terms of not being in the budget, in terms of the, you know, I think that's-
It was in the budget.
The original B was in the budget, so we still have it.
Oh, we have it. I apologize, Michael knows everything. I have it backwards. It's still in the budget. We had this extra field up here. We thought we were supposed to take it out at one point, and we haven't taken it out. The other thing that's shown on the diagram is access to the site. All of this could be revised, but it's possible that you can get Church Street going through. Right now, there's a chain across Church Street that could stay, but we would allow possibly a driveway to get access in or out on the east side of the building and allow a driveway here, possibly with a curb cut on William Street, but maybe not, as people prefer, to let you out there. So really, what it gives you is a building which, with roads and driveways, is accessible from all four sides, and you have the opportunity to shut off the road or the driveway as you choose during the school day, so that emergency vehicles could always get in, but children can cross the street if that's what you want them to do. So it would be very customary, for example, to come out of the gymnasium, which is up here, and cross to the playing field, and at that point, you might have shut off traffic on the street. I think the other piece is the kind of courtyard building which makes a gesture towards community in the sense that there are, if I go on to that. If you look at the building diagram, the yellow is the corridors, and you imagine those corridors having lots of glass. Then all the kids in here look out at the playground, and there's a kind of a sense of community. The cafeteria would look out on the playground. And then if you go on up to the other floors, what are down here is the preschool, the pre-K, the K, and first, which is required to be on the first floor, and then we have the other classrooms up above. The gym would have been here. That's advantageous because the gym would get north light, which faces back here to the courtyard. This part is the two-story part. We don't have any floor up here. So even that, if somebody says, well, let's have a slightly bigger footprint, could we make more of it two stories? Yes. Those are flexible things, but right now, we have an L-shaped building that's three stories and this piece there that's two stories. That's what's going on. I think we go back to here. If you look at this as kind of an overall place, we have a site, and we've looked at putting it here, here, and there. That's what we've done. And there are ways that you could look at this and say, well, why don't we move it down a little to the south? That could be tried. I mean, it's not a conceptual change to say, we want a bigger setback along William Street, for example. I don't think that's a life-or-death decision at this time because there's so many town agencies and committees that will review this, that will come outright, whoever the architect is. That's the sense I have.
Could you, you've mentioned the three particular sites that you tried, and if there are modifications on that. I know what's before us today is that specific recommendation. Could you just speak to what, you may have touched on this at the last meeting, but if you could reiterate it for public edification, what a variation. Go diagonal now and try to do what you did in that location.
Well, I'd say this-
In the existing location, but again, pretend there are no obstacles, at least looking at it on the paper, and tell us what you'd have to do.
Let me just show you this for a moment. When you see one gray color on this map, you're saying you're relatively the same level. So we come from here down to the middle of the field, from the library to the field. You're coming down from this part of the library down to there, which is where the two-story wing of the library is that we added three or four years ago. That library is sitting there. It's 34 feet high from grade up to the roof, but importantly, that grade here is about six feet above that grade. So interestingly enough, the grade at the lower part of the ravine is about the grade of the playing field. It slopes down gradually. So I guess what I'm thinking is, if people thought, well, this should be back a little so that we get a shift in the green space here, it could be shifted down. Or you could say, we don't want this access here. We can shift it to the east. Those things could happen. I think probably, on the safety point of view, having the access road there is really advantageous because in case of an emergency, you can get to the building on all sides. This is, but I can see the possibility of shifting around because I think when you guys got worried on your, our site tour, it was as you went deeper into the ravine that you got worried about the viability of a building on that site. I'm trying to put words in your mouth, as you can see, but if you were shifting down or made one that was sitting where my hand is, those things can be arrangements that you could come to and still not have to use this site, which I think is, has its own challenges. I know I'm not supposed to be commenting on all three, but I'd say, we sort of said, here is B, here is C, and here is D, and I'm saying, there's some slippage that's possible in here that would probably overcome the concerns you have about C and possibly overcome some concerns other people have about B. You get the open space you need, and you still get the field. And we, you know, there's possibility of putting more fields down there if somebody wanted.
What's the height on that side that's three stories?
On this side, what we-
In relation to the library?
Okay.
You've mentioned the library is 34.
What we suggested, what I suggested is that we would, for an elementary school, do a 12-foot floor-to-floor height, but on the third floor, we'd have an eve on a low-pitched roof, which would be eight feet above the floor. So if you take 12 and 12, plus eight, to the eve, which is what is visible to you, you would end up at 32 feet. If you look at this edge of the library, that edge is 34 feet. So if you then put this down five or six feet below the elevation of the library, you're, you know, clearly at a lower elevation. You're about eight feet or six feet below the elevation of the library. This piece, which is the gym, an elementary school gym on top of the cafeteria, we have 12 feet to the floor of the gym. The gyms we've been building for elementary school kids might have an eve height anywhere from 12 to 16 feet. If we took the high one, 16 over here would be, you'd be adding 16 to 12, you'd be 28 feet. You know, houses are much higher than that. These houses are 15 feet above the grade of the field over here because the hill goes up to the east. So you begin to see that over here when you see they're on a different color. So I think the other thing about the appearance of height, and this is a design issue, is do you articulate the building in such a way that the scale is broken down? An example would be right here. You see the little bumps? And I, where's the plan of this thing? The little bumps exist on the pre-K classes, the kindergarten classes, because by the ed specs, those are larger classrooms, and what we've done is proposed there'd be a bump out, which is a special zone of the classroom where you play with blocks or do something else that's fun to do. And up above it, we don't have it. So if we go back, that bump out is a one-story bump out. What that does is change the scale of the elevation. I'm not saying that's the overriding answer to it, but I'm saying that you can modulate an elevation so that the building, which is up at 32 feet here, is, also has an eve at nine feet from the ground and the little bump out of the younger children's classroom. So there's, but of course, this only happens when we bring in models of the building and people see all this stuff.
Will there be utilities on top of the third floor? Air conditioning units or whatever?
Well, the, if we're making an attic, the question is, do we put an air handler or an air handler or two for the third floor up in the attic, or do we put it in right on the floor of the third floor? And my sense is, we would probably, and it's hard to know, we could, very often, we've done air handlers that are down at the lower level of the building in a small basement or something like that, and we bring a shaft up and distribute the air through the attic, not put the air handler up there, because it's easier to get to the machinery when you can change the filters and do that sort of stuff in a basement environment than up in an attic environment. So I can say that in most of the schoolwork we've done, we've put the major equipment down low in the building. Also, it has condensate drains and things like that, and you have floor drains that take that up in case there's a leak, but that's possible.
Can you, Rob, can you talk about the gas pipeline that was discovered and what that means?
We don't have a precise location for the gas pipeline.
Do you have a copy of the A2 survey?
Yeah.
Okay, so if you look at the A2 survey, and you look at the New Leb Avenue, so where New Leb intersects Church and Wessel's Place is where we estimate the gas line would be. And again, at this point, it's an estimate.
So from where to where? From Church to?
Right where the Paper Street, New Leb, is, and it would be right within that street.
It's right there.
It's right there.
So which means what of the possible effects on Site B, if there are any?
I mean, it's possible to relocate that gas line. Architects could better answer about building around it.
What does that mean? I mean, in terms of cost projection, how it's going to affect, I mean, what is it?
We're still figuring that out. Assume a 4-8-inch gas line.
So it's about a 4-inch or an 8-inch gas line, and you dig a trench further to the east under the driveway where you can get access to it, and these gas lines are typically four or five feet below the ground, three to five feet below the ground, and you go through a process of relocating it.
To where, I mean, is that simple, is that you're describing it or no, in terms of the process? I'm asking, I don't know.
I don't think it's a big complicated thing. I think what you want is to have it under a publicly accessible surface. In this case, a blacktop road and parking, and you get there and deal with it. It's not, the beauty of a gas line, say, compared to a big sewer line, is the sewer line is surviving on, is functioning on gravity. The gases, as you know, from having in your house, works on pressure. So we, doesn't have to be continuous downhill slope or something like that. So I don't think of that as a major obstacle, but I know this, Ron is getting more data on it.
And when will that be provided?
They're working that into the delineation reports. We're going into stage two of the delineation of the arsenic, so I'm estimating about in the next three weeks, we would know where that gas line is.
And so, and last question, worst-case scenario with that would be what? Or is there?
I'm sorry.
Worst-case scenario in terms of a gas line being there? And once again, I'm asking because I don't know.
Oh, we, that it is there or that it's not there?
That it is there. We know it's there.
We know it's there, yeah.
So what's the worst-case scenario in terms of-
The worst-case scenario, I'm not sure there really is a worst-case scenario. We would relocate it if it was through the building footprint. Best-case scenario is that it's outside of the building.
Wanted to ask our town planner if she, I saw her come in. Ms. DeLuca, is she here?
Yeah.
If you, Ms. DeLuca, if you can just comment, I know much has been made about the A2 survey, you know, the BET referenced it, members, and there was discussion on it. Can you just talk about it in the context of our process of what you typically get? I mean, this is somewhat, for our purposes in understanding, but for public edification in terms of, what is it that you get in an MI referral? And based upon what you've seen, do you feel you have that?
Okay. Good afternoon, everybody. The survey that was provided is an existing condition survey, and that is just one piece of many of the engineering plans that we require for preliminary site plan review that would be connected to the MI when it gets referred to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So the information that we require in the existing surveys are things like the meets and bounds of the property lines, which you have on this survey. We would also require the, any easements be shown, all the footprints of the structures, which are also shown on this survey here. And we do also require topographic surveys because what we're interested in when we're looking at it from a preliminary site plan is we're looking at what the existing condition is versus what the proposed condition is. So how will the site be graded? How much cut and fill are we talking about? Where is the drainage going to be located? How is the parking going to be laid out? What are the dimensions of those parking spaces and how the building is going to be laid out and the setbacks of that building to the property line? So what we're looking at from a preliminary standpoint is the juxtaposition from the existing plan to the proposed. So looking at the survey that was submitted at this level, that would just be one very small part of the bigger package that the Planning and Zoning Commission would need in order to determine whether this site would be in compliance with the zoning regulations.
Thank you. Did you have any?
What?
Did you have anything else? Oh, Mike?
Yeah.
Oh, you were going to speak to, I mean, just the dimensions of the field. So obviously, one of the points of discussion has been, this is quote-unquote "on a field" or "community green," however you classify it, it's green.
Right.
So that's impacted. So what's the corresponding give-back?
I'm going to give the, I'm going to get the dimension because we have a scale with it. I don't remember it. This, by the way, is about 200 by 200-plus, which means that you could have anybody play softball on that. In other words, you could have high school kids play softball. But you could also have a field that is, we're now at 40th, yeah. The baseline here is 200 feet, so the field is about 220 by 240, or 220 by 220. That's this. And that would be a field that slopes at a 2% slope down to the south.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the comparison again?
220 by 220.
Is that the one in the ravine?
No, we're talking about the proposal which is before us, which is B.
B, okay. But the green field that they're discussing, where is that located?
This one is at the northern edge of what we're calling the ravine.
So it's in, well, the site-
Wait, wait, we're not going to let the meeting go out of control, so you have to work through the chair. So the question that was asked is to get a comparison as to what we have now and what we would get under the proposed plan that's before us, and then, you know, you were giving us the dimensions and location.
So what is, what is actually is that the dimension of the playable open space that we have here is just about the same as this. This 1.27 acres is right here. So we've basically taken the playing field that exists up here and shifted it down to the south. This other proposal is, as Michael says, is already in the budget, is-
I'm sorry, can we go back to, okay, it's important. I'm sorry. The swap or whatever from, so the two, the two fields right now we're talking about, before we get into the one on what appears to be D, are comparable in size, correct?
Let's, I'll get it for you. You had the-
And then my second question to that is, in terms of one plate, just, I don't know if Katie, you're making it sound, and I'm not saying, I'm not questioning whether or not, that it's going to be, yes, comparable in size, but how doable is that with the constraints about putting a field nearer inside a ravine? What's involved with that? Because what is-
This right here, is this difficult to do? First, let me ask the first question, which was the size.
Yes, you said that's comparable.
So here we are, we're at the same scale map, right? And what we're getting is about 240 by about 200. What we did is to set the baselines perpendicular, so you want to have a square field. So we went and showed one at about 230 by 220 to make sure you could get 200-foot baselines to somebody hit a softball. That's the point. So, and then, of course, there's extra space here for benches for the players and stuff like that. But I, so I'd say, the irregularity of this site, it makes it more poetic, but it actually means that the usable site here is shorter on that baseline. That's, you see what happens right here if you tried to have a baseline? Your baseline is- Your baseline is... It's 40, right? Yeah, your baseline is from home plate out is about 160, 170 feet on one baseline and 200 on the other. So we just made this, just organized it so you'd have it. The other thing we did was to show the home plate down in this corner because the regulation for playing baseball is you want to have the batter face to the north, northeast, so that they don't get hit by the ball. This one would be the exact opposite of what you'd be trying to do.
And I understand what it looks like on paper and it sounds, but once again, can you talk about the realities about putting a field inside or nearer a ravine? Can someone comment on that?
Right. What that means is you're going to be filling, and if we go back to the, this drawing, this grade right here is here. We would be cutting on the edge and filling to a slight, to a higher elevation, probably a little higher elevation than the current field. That would be a possible way to do it. You know, we haven't done all the test pourings and everything else to do that. The easier one is this, honestly.
What's easier?
I said, the grading is easier up here.
Yeah, that I understand. What I'm trying to get at is, and I've been saying this over and over again, that you don't, what you don't want to do is, what you don't want to do is get into a situation where you're not promising, but a field that's comparable in size in a ravine when there are going to be obstacles. Now, I'm asking what, you know, what that really means in terms of the land use process, in terms about flooding, topography issues, et cetera, cost issues, the BET, in terms of...
We spend a lot of the time of the landscape architects in my firm designing playing fields. And we've designed playing fields in much more difficult circumstances than that. I just would take you to two, one at the master's school in Westchester County and several at the Hackley School.
I don't know about any of that. What I'm saying too, though, is...
Can we do it?
Yes.
Yes, you can absolutely do it.
And, I mean, I'm not asking, but so it's as, because you're making, that it's going to be this, it's going to be a one-for-one swap and it's going to be easy. And I'm not saying it's not going to. However, with that said, I think people have to understand it's, I don't think it's going to be as easy as you think it is. But that's just my opinion, you know?
Yeah, I think what Peter was mentioning, one-for-one was size-wise.
Yeah.
But obviously, and you're absolutely right, building here is going to be, has a cost implication.
Of course it does.
Because there's cutting and filling, there's potential retaining walls and so on.
Exactly, that's my point. And that hasn't been considered.
And so, no, it has, it has. So when we, when we, I can show you drawings if you want, but we actually drew this up schematically, and when we did the cost estimates, we had included that information. So that, you'll see, if you go back to the estimates and you look at the costs for fields, that this particular scheme had higher costs because of the work surrounding that field. So it was thought about and we have the cost related to it.
I think it might, is this on that? Yeah, okay. It should, it might be noted, though, here, just to come back, that now that we've listened to so many comments in the evening meetings, that there are issues that with that field, if you were taking it seriously as a playing field, that would have to be addressed as well. So it's not, it's not that we have a perfect field out here that's working, that has the right baselines and things like that, or the right orientation. We have one that gets wet periodically. We have one that has strange slopes at the side, that doesn't have a perfect shape, doesn't drain well. So all of those things are things you might work on. And this other part can be solved.
Yeah, I mean, I would just share some information I did receive that I think reinforces the point that everyone can agree on, whether it's there, 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 that a field is very important in Byram. And so the Parks Department looked at what hours that field has accommodated over the course of two years. And in their analysis, they went through their rec track system and what were all the games and activities. And so in 2013, there was about 573 hours of play. And in '14, there was 682 hours of play. So that doesn't take into consideration any type of pickup games or community events. It's all, you know, Cal Ripken baseball, midget baseball, and so forth. And that's out of a universe of 26,000 hours of field time annually. So, you know, fields are a big issue. The BET just this year moved to appropriate funds to look at turfing the middle school fields to increase playability. So coming out of this whole project clearly is the desire to have an improved field.
I think if you take the idea that you'd be spending somewhat more to produce this field, it could be a very, it could be a perfectly acceptable field. I think the kicker here is to get the other field up there on what is already flatland. I know the rock is close to the surface, but do the right under drainage and put a field up there. This is 150 by 240, which is the recommended size for the age group we're talking about. So, I mean, that's, and you understand that the biggest constraint here is the east-west dimension. You know, we don't have a, but there it is. I mean, obviously, we're occupying the other flatland with the parking.
So again, just to summarize, the field that exists and the field that's proposed that the...
Basically, this field is comparable. I would say if it's done right, it would be an improved version of what you already have. And, but it has to be done right. And this is the surplus, which is a whole other active field that could be used by kids that are older than fifth grade as well.
And that, the second part on what we're referring to as D, that hasn't been included in the budget, correct?
It has been included in the budget.
Both fields here have been, both of them have.
It's in the B scheme, yes.
Yeah, the final thing I'll just say on fields for public edification, more general, because it is a big issue, is that each time there's been a BOE construction project, and several of them, going to Central, Old Greenwich, Cos Cob, North Mayanis, and Ham, North Mayanis, they've lost footage of ball field space. And they enumerated 60-foot ball field at Central, 60-foot ball at Old Greenwich, 90 at foot at Cos Cob, and 60-foot at North Mayanis. And Ham Ave, there's a lot of discussion that that's not playable. I mean, that's what they put down. So I just wanted to share that because they took the time, staff time, to compile it as we look at this in its totality.
The bottom line, if we did this correctly, is we would have a functional field here that's better than what you currently have here. It would be usable by kids of a variety of ages, including, you know, softball later on in life, and for men's softball and women's softball and all that sort of stuff. This one completely doesn't exist here and would be reasonable-sized playing field all the way up through the eighth grade. And obviously, all kinds of pickup games could be there because we adults are happy to run a little less in playing soccer, right?
Peter, I think the other really important issue is the adjacency of the school to the field, because they currently don't have, they spend too much time trying to get back and forth where here the adjacency is something is...
This is the gym right here. The stairs would take you down to this.
And again, I think we recognize and support that, and that was one of the questions we had when we were talking about D last time, is making accommodations in a design that would put the gymnasium to the front.
Right, I remember that.
Recognizing there's an elevation. I went and walked again yesterday, but I can't, I can't imagine that it couldn't be done to achieve the same outcome.
Conceivably, yes.
You answered that for me the day that we were all there, when we sort of talked about, you know, that...
No, I'm only...
We were talking about C that day.
What we've done here, to be prudent, is we've left the rock out crop that's right there undisturbed. And we've sort of, we're behind the rock out crop with the parking, which is basically, if you look at this, could you turn that one? Look at the edge of the building. We've aligned the edge of the parking essentially with the edge of the building at the north. So we haven't gone beyond it. And if we've gone five or 10 feet beyond it, we could just slip the parking back this way. So that was, that was a kind of a conservative gesture there to, and then we get a stair and path down here.
Thank you.
Thanks. Did you have a question you said for Katie?
Well, in terms of just a comment, if she has any comments on the field itself or this, or is it premature? Katie?
Katie, Mr. Marzillo just had a question, if you had any...
Just in terms of comments about the field itself, or is it premature until something gets in front of you? I mean, I don't want to put you on the spot necessarily, but...
To be frank, I haven't seen, seen the location of the field, but I think the comments that you had made before are very valid in terms of the size of it and how it would impact the drainage, what it would look like, the retaining walls that would be associated with it, the access to it, the pedestrian access for the schoolchildren, all the things that the development team has been referring to, are all the things that the Planning and Zoning Commission would also be looking to and would need answers to.
Okay, that's fair. Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
No.
Barbara, do you have anything you wanted to add? Okay, so before us is the second request for municipal improvement status for Option B. For purposes of further discussion, is there a motion?
So move for further discussion?
Second, okay. Do you have any comments that you'd like to make?
No, before, no, I'll open up, I'll make it after they hear.
Okay, do you want to make any comments?
Right now.
Before voting?
Yeah.
I'd like to hear from them.
Unfortunately, I don't think that Plan B addresses the needs of the community at large. This is the reason that it was rejected in the first place. And Plan B will perpetuate the unfortunate divisions that has arisen in the community. And I think that Plan B will change the dynamic of the village of Byram and will not be reversed in the foreseeable future.
Great, thank you. Did you...
I continue to have concerns about the balance. And when you look at this in terms of the campus with the library, the green, where this school sits, in the undeveloped woods, ravine, whatever you call it, I understand that, you know, this is workable, no doubt. But in the end, and I went again yesterday and I sat there, I saw Corey down there and Mr. Dubroky, we were sitting there talking afterwards, it changes the character of the neighborhood in my mind. You're moving a 50-some-odd-thousand-square-foot facility closer on William than which is closer to Delvin. I cannot sit up here in good conscience, not recall the meetings we had, I think, one, maybe two, where we went onsite and tried to address some of the traffic issues related to signalization and turning lanes. For me, I feel like it's bringing the activity closer to that and exacerbating the problem that we have. So in terms of the concept being sound from a construction and feasibility, there's no question it is. But in terms of applying it into the community, the village of Byram, we have several studies that were done there about it. I just, in my good conscience, can't, can't put up my stamp of approval on it, knowing what I know about the broader context of the community. That is why I'm continually focused on taking what, one of the members, in fact, of the Building Committee, when we were interviewing them, said, you know, when you look at that site, you have to appreciate that those folks who picked the location for the original school picked the best location. And I came away from that particular discussion saying, you know, here's someone who's had experience building schools and lives in the neighborhood, and they're right, it just, it just makes sense. So until I have exhausted the process whereby one can look at achieving the objectives that are set forth in the Ed specs and within the school community and within the greater Byram community and Greenwich community, I'm not prepared to support B today. I would like to see that exhausted and look at that in totality. And I know there's a lot of folks who spend a lot of time and are, we're getting a lot of feedback, both sides, I think, you know, it was John mentioned it, again, it's always important to take a step back. I've been unhappy with some of the assertions made by pretty much folks on both sides. It's raised a very unfortunate tone and tenor in our community. So this isn't directed to you, it's just more broadly. That doesn't serve anybody well. Questioning, you know, people's residents, questioning who the school serves, questioning our motives and so forth. I think when things degenerate to that level, everybody loses. Because at the end of the day, no one's sitting here for a nonvalid reason. Everyone wants a particular outcome. The question is, what is that best outcome? For me, I'm not prepared to vote affirmatively today until I can see a sincere effort on the part of the Board of Ed to give D in a fair hearing and work with you and others who perhaps have stepped forward to offer their guidance. I mean, there's a lot of talent in the community. I know within the Byram community, people have stepped forward if they can address that, I would certainly feel more comfortable moving forward with something other than what I'm, what I'm saying.
Yes, I have to agree with my two colleagues and will say that I would like the Board of Education to bring to us, in my opinion, Site D. And I will, I will comment on my reasons in terms of the possible changing landscape, the ball field. I have questions about whether or not, from a cost point of view, from a land use point of view, if that's going to be the actual, actuality of that, if whether or not we're going to, but... I also have issues, obviously, with traffic and construction, but depending on who you ask, you're going to get people that say it can be done. And I'm not debating whether or not it could be done, but we have to make, this board has to make a judgment call. I will say, though, in terms of the tone of the emails, this board has received, I don't know, anywhere from 130 emails, that's not including the phone calls and the meetings we've had with architects, BOE members, administration, input from parents, input from the Byram Neighborhood Association. I say that because there has been some that say that the Board of Selectment has not been involved in this process, and that is just emphatically not correct. This board has been completely and utterly involved, I mean, in this from the point of view. I will also comment, too, on the safety aspect, because there have been comments, too, about, in the emails, about the safety of whether one site is safer than the other. I will say that this board, every decision we make, that is probably the most important decision. And to sort of insinuate or think that we're going to somehow put children in an unsafe place is just flatly wrong. So I am not, I am not supporting B as well.
So the motion before the board is presently to consider the request for referral of B. It was moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Nope. That referral request has been denied. I would propose, as earlier comments reiterated, that we request the Board of Education, working with interested parties, to more fully evaluate Plan D, use of the existing site in the accompanying perimeter area, to achieve the objectives that are set forth in the Ed specifications and bring that to us for consideration.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is appointments and nominations, item number three. Sure. About, about, about this or about? Let's talk about it offline, because we're, okay? Yeah, they're going to be, yeah, ask them to stay, because this won't take long, this shouldn't... Right, well, we could, we could delay that. If you could just let us know who you are.
My name is Peter Vatchak, I live in Byram, I'm a parent.
Sure, sure.
Do you have a mic?
I'm curious as... Sorry to...
Disrupt this...
No worries, no worries, go ahead.
But I'm curious as to what the Board of Education did this past 18 months. They have looked at plans, they have heard meeting after meeting, and I know that Byram has been presented to you as a divided community, but I don't see it that way. We, we're a community that's fairly united in our desire to get the right thing for our, our name...
our, our neighborhood, for all of our residents. And I'm curious as to what the Ed specs are that maintain, that we need to just abandon B, even though the architects have told you that B's a pretty good spot? The Board of Ed has listened to meeting after meeting, as I said. Barbara O'Neill's summary the other night, after a 6-2 vote of your elected Board of Officials, your elected officials of the Board of Ed, voted 75% to 25% to look at B. Two community members of Byram, two citizens of B and the D, have combined together to propose a Plan B modified version. Now, I'm wondering why we're going to completely forsake the efforts of the community, the efforts of the elected officials of the Board of Education, who have clearly voiced their opinion after, after many meetings, not just, "Look at these pretty pictures, I vote B." And you gentlemen are, in 45 minutes, and I understand, Mr. Marzullo, that you, I saw you at the meeting the other, a couple weeks ago, I didn't see anybody on Tuesday, but that, that's irrelevant, I get it. But you're going to not just dismiss B, but you want to see D again. So again, I ask you, what was the last 18 months?
I'll give you, let me just answer to you in terms of this, the question you asked. I articulated my reasoning in terms of familiarity, more than familiarity. As someone who's lived in this town, I've been over there, been at that school, been at that library, addressed traffic and safety issues at this board on the street, not just sitting up here, actually in Byram.
I get it.
I just, I truly do not believe that is the best location to situate a new structure. Two, in all fairness to the Board of Ed, I say this, and it may come out the wrong way, I think they're solely looking at it from the context of what their mission is in terms of delivering the education, and the potential disruption that will occur if, in fact, they go with D. We have to look at it from a much broader microscope in the town, which is saying, we have a site which, I believe, is known. I mean, there's a building on it, versus one that's unknown.
I understand, but in 1950, I don't think that they were necessarily thinking about the same things that we think about now, as far as being-
No question.
-safe, and evacuation, and ingress and egress. I honestly don't.
But it can be done, as he said, it can be done, so let's-
But he also said it would be better to do it down on the ground.
Did he say that?
Yes.
He said it to me out in the hallway. Because I was the only one that asked him what he thought was the best way to go. But, and I honestly, in all due respect, one thing I'd like to say is the divided community thing about Byram, not divided, you're talking about every meeting, people showed up, and everybody got to hear, got to be heard, and got to be represented. And all I think that they're asking for now is, is to be represented. You know what I mean?
In terms, in terms of, in terms of-
Yes.
In terms of alternatives-
In the paper a couple-
We only recently are aware that there's a hot, we'll call it modified B. I know, Mr. Pecora, I spoke to him. That was not on our agenda today. Certainly, it's within the board's purview to just, to bring whatever they'd like to bring forward. We've given them our direction. But I don't necessarily subscribe that they're not divided, based upon the communications we've been receiving. And so, we've been getting considerable amount of communications, I think you mentioned 130. I mean, we've gotten one from someone from the Neighborhood Association, questioning whether they still had status or not. We have people who still believe that the village green should be preserved in the building where it is, so-
Right, and I understand-
It still exists.
The other night, I said this, and I've been living in Byram for eight years, and I read, and, and I, and I, and I have never heard, until 10 days ago, that being called a village green. It's a baseball field, a single little baseball field. It's, you know what I mean? You know what I mean? Anyway, I just-
Baseball field or village green, it's, it's almost, it's still what, it's what they perceive it. Yes, sir.
Could I ask a point of invitation?
We've actually moved to-
It just went kind of quick. And it just, you know what I mean?
Okay. I'm, I'm a little, having been in planning and zoning and following it for 30, 40 years, having been on the RTM for 25 years, and dealt with a lot of MIs, having had to look at the fine print of all of these operations, we in the town of Greenwich have devised a system to deal with this. What I don't understand, is I look at the charter and our rules. The rules are very simple. The Board of Ed decides that we need a new school, or a new part of a school. In order to do that, they go together and say, okay, what is this new school going to do? And they devise what's called the Ed specs, which is what this physical building is supposed to produce in educational services. Once they've said this is what we need to have given to us, or delivered to us, they ask the Selectmen to form a Building Committee, and start the process, MI is one of the parts of the process. Once the school board has asked, made that request, they have nothing more directly to do, or authority, as I understand it from the charter, except that they have the right to approve, not initiate, not pick, but approve the selection of an architect by the Building Committee, and they have the right to approve, or disapprove, the final plans that are developed by that Building Committee. That is their sole and complete involvement in it. And the reason for that separation is the kind of points I think that you, Mr. Selectmen, brought up. The Board of Education's job is to supply good education. And that's wonderful. And that's their point of view, but it's a narrow point of view. The job of P and Z, the job of the Board of Selectmen, and that's why I believe it's devised this way, is to look at how these various town facilities fit and integrate within the whole town system. That's why we have town, we have a POCD. Byram, we spent years on a Byram plan, on looking at how the flow of traffic, all of those things. So, am I correct in my understanding that the Board of Ed really has been put in a position far beyond their expertise or their requirements, as far as picking sites? Thank you.
Again, again, I'm not going to debate the-
Yeah.
I mean, you're, you're, you went through the chart, yeah. The charter stipulates that we've been given guidance on it. I mean, everybody's trying to fill their subscribe role.
No, but I'm, all I want to know is, I want it even for you, excuse the pun, where everybody's by the same rules. Am I correct that that is the law?
Yeah. That's, that's what we were told.
Peter, my only, my only comment that I wanted to make, and gets a little ugly in here, and it's not supposed to. If the Board of Ed could come back with a modified plan, in relatively the B location, where the community works together, and, I live in Byram, I know the traffic issues, and keeps the traffic flow in the same location that it currently is, keeps the safety, keeps, adds more forestry and green than what currently exists, and can show you that the field that is being proposed is not only viable, but will be a better field, and allows the Byram Library to remain in the same configuration with their own parking, and doesn't bother them at all, can we come back with a modified B?
Again, I mean, up to the Board of Ed, and I would encourage, like I said, they got to work with the people whom are impacted. I mean, there needs to be representation from the library as part of this discussion, not on the periphery, but someone on their board actually take part in the discussions, as well as, as well as, I think-
We don't have a problem with that. I mean, I think one of the problems has been, is that the architects hired have done a fine job in what they've been given, you know, been given, but they don't really know that, they're just giving us a specific plan, and you're being forced to vote on a specific plan versus a location.
We did articulate on a couple of occasions, though, that we wanted to see D fully vetted and explored. And I think that's what both members of the board and myself have said.
D, D has been vetted and fully explored, and that's the point. The point is, is that it doesn't work in today's environment, unless you were, you know-
That's your opinion, sir.
Yes.
We want to get our opinion in there, too.
Yeah, so we, we, so that's going to go back to the board. I think they are fully capable of listening to public reply, and, and I know, I spoke to Ms. O'Neill last night about this, and, again, there are plenty of people who can avail themselves to give the board their guidance. Item number three on the agenda was appointments and nominations, and we have someone who's come forward with building experience to serve on the New Lebanon Building Committee. Today, the Board of Selectmen met with Jake Allen. He's been a resident of Greenwich since 1973. He previously lived in Byram. He currently lives at 69 Hillcrest Park, Old Greenwich. He has a BSBA in Construction Management from the University of Denver. He is the present owner of Allen Construction and Consulting, which is a commercial construction company. As, he's the owner and operator. He has three kids in, at North Manus School, and has worked on Greenwich Adult Daycare's Board, and is a graduate of GHS. So, we've been looking for someone with these particular credentials, and he volunteered to come forward. Some of his projects included Choate Rosemary Hall in Wallingford, the loading dock in Stamford, Greenwich Country Day School, Blue Sky Studios, Starwood Capital. So it goes on and on. I think, you know, we were looking for this expertise, it's come forward, he provided references, and at this time, I would move the nomination of Jake Allen to be a member of the New Lebanon School Building Committee.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Yep.
All those in favor of Mr. Jake Allen to serve on the New Lebanon Building Committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Post?
Present.
He is not. He was with us earlier, he did have to go back to work, but-
It's one of the-
Yeah, so we're up to six from the town.
You might want to say two, because it's-
Actually, it's actually eight, because you count the Board of Ed and the BET, eight, the nine.
You do, but we also have to, in terms of the political affiliation-
Yeah, we need, we need one more member. Due to the way the minority representation rule for political affiliation works, the next person has to be either unaffiliated, or a Democrat, cannot be a Republican.
What was Gil?
Along the same lines, we, yeah. We've got good ar, we've got architectural, now-
We've got legal, we've got architectural.
Legal, yeah, we've got two legal, two architects.
Some community, right?
Yep.
All right. Second.
All right, great, thank you.
Executive session.
Is there any other nominations? Was there someone else? Dr. Engles?
I didn't check to see what the makeup of the board was politically, so I don't know.
Okay.
Hold on. We could say-
I don't know, but I mean-
But you can be-
Okay, that concludes appointments and nominations. Number four is executive session. We're going to be receiving an update on some pending claims and pending litigation. And at this time, I'd make a motion to go into executive session for that purpose.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Afraid to go in there.